Good evening. Our July 25, 2019 City Council meeting is not called to order. Tonight, our invocation and pledge will be led by Mark Scott. Mark is a 12-year-old Star Scout with Troop 621. He has 35 badges completed toward his goal of Eagle Scout. Mark is homeschooled. Please rise. Mark?
Please join me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, please help us in this meeting. Please give us your guidance and wisdom. Please bless all those citizens in Longview and please have every council member have a safe trip home. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mark, thank you for coming up and doing this for us tonight. Keep going for that Eagle Scout badge. We'll have you up here presenting that to you at some point in time, okay? Thank you, sir. You come from a long line of service to our community. Thank you, sir, as well. Tonight, in employee recognition, we're recognizing our Geographical Information Systems, or GIS. That's a technology used to view and analyze data from geographical perspectives. Our GIS employees provide services to city staff, citizens, and external agencies to support effective operation and decision-making. They're responsible for updating existing data, creating web mapping applications, supporting the citywide work order and permitting systems, managing City Send, and performing advanced data analysis. ESRI, pronounced Esri, the world leader in GIS software with over 100,000 customers, recently recognized Longview with a special achievement in the GIS Award. This award is given to organizations that use GIS and innovative ways to improve society. Only 20 other cities in the United States have received this award this year. So please join me in recognizing Marcus Arigain, Sukumar Alluri, Justin Kure, Dale Hawbaker, James Jimenez, Roger Mosier, Westy Stremel, and Joey Westbrook. I do a lot of these. None of them scare me quite like this one. Because this is so far over my head, I don't even know what I just read. All I recognized was City Send app. Well, what that means is, these individuals in this group are what keep Longview and our technology going on a day-to-day basis. They keep us in line. They take care of all the things that come in through all the systems that involve our community. And I just, I mean, you guys, y'all, you're like accountants to me. Accounting was the hardest class I ever took in college. I lasted two days and I dropped it. So every accountant, I think, is the smartest person in the world. You guys are that to me. Your technology, your skills, the buildings that you do for Longview, they blow me away. I appreciate every single one of y'all and what you do. Keep up the good work, because without you, we would not be where we are technically in all that we do and all the ways we're able to let the citizens talk to us through the ways they would talk to us. It's so much easier now. And I know, I know it sounds crazy, but the City Send app is one of my biggest go-tos. When someone calls me and says, "I've got a problem," I say, "Hit City Send, it will get taken care of." And it does, every single time. And that, thanks to you guys, that's what makes this work. So, man, I appreciate you guys. I don't, I can't talk technical about y'all, but I just know I thank you for what you do for the city. Thank you very much. Thank you all. Thank you. Hold on. You want to this side? I just feel smarter standing in the picture with these guys. Let's stand here for a while, guys. I need all the help I can get. Thank y'all so much. I do not have community recognition tonight. That slipped past me, and we'll get it again next time. So, thank you for indulging on that. Sorry about that. Citizen comment. I do have a few speaker cards tonight. We'll start with Ann Jackson.
How are you doing this evening again?
Thank you.
This...
Ms. Jackson, please state your name and address, if you would, when you come for us. Thank you.
My name is Ann Jackson, as you just stated twice. My address is 1518 North 7th Street.
Thank you.
Number 16, Longview, Texas. I'm just gonna bring up a few pointers about where I live and I'm leaving. Not leaving Longview, though. When I moved in, there was an agreement where we could burn with a little fire pit. Basically, they said it was a senior citizen, like apartment complex. They said, "Okay, there's not a downstairs apartment, because you're disabled. When one comes open, we'll get you one." There were various things promised, never came true. So, to me, it was a good old bait and switch. Soon after moving in, I was accused of doing something to someone's cat. The manager thought, said that he, his wife thought I had done something to his cat. Well, I've done animal rescues, spay neuters, I've done, you know, adoption. I've done all sorts of things. I'm like, "I don't think so." Was basically told to handle up on someone else, or else. They said, "We're not doing a third eviction." I said, "I don't handle up on other people." I said, "That is for you to do. You are the only ones that are allowed by law to handle someone who you find is a problem." It has gone and escalated. I was blamed for calling an inspection, an inspection that I didn't do. Out of that, basically, it just escalated and got worse and worse. And I had just moved in. I was like, "I don't even know anyone here. What the heck?" This has gone into, I had five roof leaks, which flooded my house, which flooded literally a brand-new mattress, box spring, various other properties. Literally, this has just continued on and on and on. But I don't understand why us citizens are being asked to get estimates to clean up hazmat, because they also did hazmat at one time in my house, and just left it there. Hazmat being concrete dust, tile dust, and possibly asbestos. I don't understand how the tenants are being told to clean it up, to get estimates. I just had a sixth leak recently, and they said, "Well, get towels and clean it up. Just use some old towels," and left. And I said, "I don't do the manager's work. I don't do that." I don't understand how an inspector can come out and then miss something and is asked to be brought back out. That I did do, and said, "Well, let's leave it till the next inspection." Well, then, I had five roof leaks. I had a bunch of property damage, because he just wanted to leave it until the next. I don't understand how citizens are being asked to do these things. And if they are having problems, I want the citizens, please, I'm asking the citizens, please notify local law enforcement and the Housing Discrimination Board.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Next speaker, Kendria Moore.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kendria Moore. Address 1235 Meadowview Drive. That's my mother's address. I am a graduate of Longview High School, graduated 1996, and I wanted to come back, give back to the community. We're hosting an event on tomorrow at the Longview Community Center. Mayor Mack, you have been very gracious in helping us with this community involvement, as well as Councilwoman Nona Snotty, as well as Councilman Ray Wade. Have, you all have been tremendously a great blessing to what we're doing. We're gonna be honoring some of the pastors in this area who have been, you know, great over the years, the last 30 years. They have given into this area. They have sown their time. They've made people in the community become better leaders, better at whatever they're doing. They have poured into their lives. And so, I want to thank you for the community involvement and just invite everybody to come out and help us to support Longview, because this is my hometown. This is where I grew up and I was raised, and I am somebody. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I don't remember you in high school. I was class of 95.
I was class of 1996.
No, no.
You look a little bit older than Mayor Mack.
No, no.
But you can pass for, you can pass for 95. Yes, you can. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Y'all know how to hurt a man. Okay. Janaya Jennings?
Good evening. My name is Janay Jennings. Address 2300 Bill Owens Parkway, Longview, Texas. I'm currently a graduate student at Texas A&amp;M University Commerce. I'm pursuing my master's degree in social work. I also, I have partnered with a local resident, Ms. Kay Holmes, who has a PhD candidate in sociology at Texas Women's University, and we are looking to examine the effects of food deserts on our local community. A food desert is an area with little to no food retailers and where people face physical and economic barriers to accessing healthy foods. Research has shown that limited access to healthy food, healthy and nutritious foods can result in poor health outcomes, including but not limited to diabetes, heart disease, high blood pressure, and stroke. There are other influences that, there are other factors that influence poor health outcomes as well, such as lack of education on what exactly is healthy and nutritious. After examining this research, we took a look at our own local communities. Within the city of Longview, there are a number of supermarkets and food retailers that provide access to healthy food options. But these facilities are predominantly located within the 76505, 04, and 03 zip codes. There are limited vendors or services that provide healthy and nutritious food options within the 75602 and 01 zip codes. So tonight, I would like to propose three change interventions that the city of Longview could implement to impact the health of its residents. My first proposal is for a community garden. This intervention would not only provide residents with access to healthy and nutritious food options, but also could be used to generate funds to develop other areas of the community within its location. My second intervention would be a pop-up farmer's market during the spring and summer seasons. This would provide access to healthy and nutritious foods while also combating the issues of transportation that many face trying to travel to the supermarkets that are far from where they live. Finally, I would like to propose culturally-specific nutrition education. Many people have a sense of identity connected through their food, to their culture. And it would be beneficial for citizens not only to learn what and what is not healthy, but also learn how changing small ingredients, such as the type of oil or salt used, can make a meal healthier without sacrificing its taste or cultural significance. We will be continuing this research through the remainder of the year and possibly look forward to continuing it into other areas of our research as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your presentation. Kevin and Ethan Blalock.
Hello. I'm Kevin Blalock, 1421 Valley Drive. This is my son, Ethan. I'm a little underprepared. I see everybody else had notes. I won't go from the heart on this one. I really want to thank y'all for, you know, the bond for the skate park, helping Brian Dotson, which has done numerous years of work trying to get a skate park here. Talking to this man right here, Scott, back here, and they listened. And I really thank y'all for offering half of that skate park. You want to say anything, sir?
Just thank you, because I don't like having to, like, travel anywhere to go, like, skating or do whatever. It's like having a skate park close. It's very good. Thank you.
And my friends over here and the rest of the biking and skating community just want to say thank y'all for doing that for us. That's really nice. And we'll take care of it, and thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. I have no other speaker cards. So we will move on to presentation items. We have a presentation of the class of 1969, from the Longview Police Department Honor Guard, and we're gonna have Ms. Shirley Powell presenting that and for her husband, Tony Powell. Hello, Ms. Shirley.
Hello, Edward Berlin.
So glad to have you.
Thank you. I can stop here?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want me to stop here?
Perfect.
If I can place these here. First of all, greetings. Greetings from the class of Mary C. Womack, class of 1969, to the mayor, the mayor and the city manager, the council, and to the staff. I am Shirley Powell. I was and am the council of the chairperson of the Parade Committee for the Mary C. Womack class of 1969, its 50th class reunion. And what I'd like to do now is ask Chief Bishop if he would come, and then I would like to have a representative or the color guard, the honor guard, to come. If you'd like to stand, I can stand there. I'd just like to say, we are so grateful for all the professionalism that you showed us, the class of 1969. We are just happy that we were able to come to you, talk to you, and you were there for us. You went, you surpassed what we expected you to do. Your assistance, your kindness, it just was wonderful. And we just wanted to thank you for creating that feeling of support from the entire police department. We felt it. And we are here today because of you being so instrumental and making this such a success for the class of 59, the parade. This is our first one that we've ever had. And to be accepted in the way that we were, we just really are here to show you our gratitude. So what I've done tonight is brought you a plaque. And this plaque is an appreciation for all that you did for us, all of your hard work. And there wasn't a time that he even called. You called me. I called you. We emailed back. And so I just appreciate that. I just felt all the love from not just the police department, I actually felt it from the city of Longview. So, to you, I present Longview Police Chief Mike Bishop, Mary C. Womack, class of 1969, the 50th reunion parade for 2019, which was in June. This is for you. Thank you. Okay, and now, to the honor guard division. Boy, this is what I feel for you. I have such admiration for you because of your kindness and your willingness to actually walk in the rain. They marched in the rain. And because it had already said that it was going to be a rainy day, and we knew that, but we just knew we were gonna beat the rain. So, all we heard from the police department, actually led, and one that was in the rear, was, "All right, we can do this, but let's get started." So, that was something that I wasn't surprised to hear, but I felt real good to know that you were really willing to work with us. So, tonight, for your support, we also have a plaque of appreciation. And if you would accept this from the class, from our hearts, it would just feel so great. And I'll take all this information back to my classmates. This is the plaque. And what it says is, Longview Police Honor Guard Division, Mary C. Womack, class of 1969, 50th Class Reunion Parade for 2019. Thank you so very much. Now, we thought that I was gonna be on the end of this. We didn't know it was gonna be in the beginning, so we were really trying to get here. But that was one other thing that they wanted to present. And there was a picture actually taken of you guys. You did such a wonderful job. We were gonna frame it. I still want to do that, but I want to go ahead and bring it tonight, just to show our appreciation. So if you will allow me to bring this by the office later on this week, I would appreciate that. Thank you so much. Thank you, guys.
Hey, Sean, why don't you get a picture of Ms. Shirley with the, with the police officers, please? Tony, you can come up if you want to, since you came late. It's all right, Tony. You weren't much later than Jimmy, so it doesn't matter.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thanks, yes, to Longview Police Department.
We're at the Public Safety Update now. Chief Bishop, you're up. Thank you, sir.
Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Bonds, good evening. Here we go. I'd like to start it out by thanking the youth group at First Baptist Church at The Rock last Tuesday. They invited our officers down for a pancake lunch. It was wonderful. All the, the whole youth group prepared the meal and served the officers. I wanted to thank them and let them know what great servants they are to invite us and provide a lunch for our officers. We, we really enjoyed it and appreciated everything that they did to help support the police department. I'd like to give a little shout-out to our Explorer, Explorer group within the police department. Just here recently, we sent a group of youth to Arlington to compete in the Texas Law Enforcement Explorer Advisor Association Competition in Arlington, Texas. During this competition, there was Explorer groups from all across the state. There was more than 60-plus Explorer groups. And our Explorers were able to capture first place in the crime scene search competition, second place in the active shooter competition, and third place in the arrest, search, and seizure competition. And I'm very proud of this group of Explorers. There are several in this group that are gonna be our future officers when they, when they reach the age of 21. So I want to congratulate them on representing not only the police department, but the city. And it's a pretty tough, rigorous competition, and they were able to walk away with three different awards. So congratulations to, to them. Tuesday, September 3, at 6:00 p.m., we'll have our National Night Out kickoff event. Anyone interested in hosting a National Night Out party, we would like to invite them to this kickoff event, a register party, pick up some supplies for their, for their event, and get their parties registered early so that we can get as many parties across the city as we can. We've always, always had great participation from our community on National Night Out. And want to encourage everybody to mark this date and come out, and let's have a good kickoff party and start the preparations for our National Night Out. On September 5 through October 17, we'll be starting our annual Citizens Police Academy. Anyone interested in learning more about the police department and how we operate, we would like to invite them to come participate in our academy. It'll be held on Tuesday and Thursday nights from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. And individuals interested can go to longviewtexas.gov/cpa to download an application. We'd love to have as many as we can get in the class. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions from Chief Bishop? Thank you, sir. Chief Tillman.
Good evening, Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Bonds. Thank you for the opportunity to present this update of some things that have happened in the Fire Department since our last meeting. Our SBA loan recovery process, this is part of the recovery from our May 8 Straight Line Wind event that we had. That program is shutting down, probably as we speak. Today was the final day of that. I'm happy to report that six local residents took advantage, or at least filed paperwork to take advantage of this recovery process. That's, I'm a little encouraged by that, considering the last time we had them in town, we only had one. But out of 313, to only see six, we've still got some work to do to make sure that we're getting that message out to residents to know that this is, this is available to them if they need that level of assistance recovering. So I certainly thank those partners that came in, especially from out of state, to set this temporary office up and to serve our citizens over the course of the past couple of weeks. Earlier today, at our training center, we, we hosted a regional meeting of emergency management coordinators from around the ETCOg region, the 14 counties that make up that area. A lot of good information was exchanged. A lot of our state partners were there to, I guess, educate us on some things that were changing at the state level, some of the processes, some of the faces have changed, just to make sure that we had the newest and most current information for when we had to deal with, with large, wide-scale events, to know who those contact people are and what those processes are and how they've changed. So I was certainly glad to have all those partners in town with us today to share that information. Next week, we'll be celebrating, and this is open to the public, the 20 and a half years of service of one of our deputy fire marshals, Jimmy Purcell, will be retiring from the Longview Fire Department. You may recall in the newspaper a couple of weeks ago, Jimmy is gonna retire from the Longview Fire Department to go start a second career in the city of Whitoke, where they've, they've actually already appointed him as the fire chief, fire marshal, and building official. So we're proud to see Jimmy head off. We're sad to see him leave, but we're proud to see him head into that new venture just next door, and we look forward to continue the opportunities to work with him as a near neighbor. Heat-related emergencies, I almost took this slide out, because this week, it kind of didn't make sense, but it's gonna get hot again. So I just want to keep this out in front of our citizens to make sure that they know the difference and they know that the quick activation of 911 is paramount. I know a lot of people are gonna be going out to the balloon race this weekend. I know those temperatures are gonna be creeping back up. So we're not out of the woods yet, so I'm gonna keep putting this one out in front of everybody. Our, our heat-related emergency incidents are on the uptick, and we anticipate that to continue, especially through August. We all know how hot it gets around here, really all the way into September. So it just makes... I'd like to give a little shout out to our Explorer, Explorer group within the police department. Just here recently, we sent a group of youth to Arlington to compete in the Texas Law Enforcement Explorer Advisor Association Competition in Arlington, Texas. During this competition, there was Explorer groups from all across the state. There was more than 60-plus Explorer groups. And our Explorers were able to capture first place in the crime scene search competition, second place in the active shooter competition, and third place in the arrest, search, and seizure competition. And I'm very proud of this group of Explorers. There are several in this group that are going to be our future officers when they, when they reach the age of 21. So I want to congratulate them on representing not only the police department, but the city. And it's a pretty tough, rigorous competition, and they were able to walk away with three different awards. So congratulations to, to them. Tuesday, September 3rd, 6:00 p.m., we'll have our National Night Out kickoff event. Anyone interested in hosting a National Night Out party, we would like to invite them to this kickoff event to register party, pick up some supplies for their, for their event, and get their parties registered early so that we can get as many parties across the city as we can. We've always, always had great participation from our community on National Night Out. And want to encourage everybody to mark this date and come out, and let's have a good kickoff party and start the preparations for our National Night Out. On September 5th through October 17th, we'll be starting our annual Citizens Police Academy. Anyone interested in learning more about the police department and how we operate, we would like to invite them to come participate in our academy. It'll be held on Tuesday and Thursday nights from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. And individuals interested can go to longviewtexas.gov/cpa to download an application. We'd love to have as many as we can get in the class. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions from Chief Bishop? Thank you, sir. Chief Stillman.
Good evening, Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Bonds. Thank you for the opportunity to present this update of some things that have happened in the fire department since our last meeting. Our SBA loan recovery process, this is part of the recovery from our May 8 straight line wind event that we had. That program is shutting down probably as we speak today was the final day of that. I'm happy to report that six local residents took advantage or at least filed paperwork to take advantage of this recovery process. That's, I'm a little encouraged by that considering the last time we had them in town, we only had one. But out of 313, to only see six, we've still got some work to do to make sure that we're getting that message out to residents to know that this is, this is available to them if they need that level of assistance recovering. So I certainly thank those partners that came in, especially from out of state, to set this temporary office up and to serve our citizens over the course of the past couple of weeks. Earlier today at our training center, we, we hosted a regional meeting of emergency management coordinators from around the ETCOg region, the 14 counties that make up that area. A lot of good information was exchanged, a lot of our state partners were there to, I guess, educate us on some things that were changing at the state level, some of the processes, some of the faces have changed, just to make sure that we had the newest and most current information for when we had to deal with, with large, wide-scale events, to know who those contact people are and what those processes are and how they've changed. So I was certainly glad to have all those partners in town with us today to share that information. Next week, we'll be celebrating, and this is open to the public, the 20 and a half years of service of one of our deputy fire marshals, Jimmy Purcell, will be retiring from the Longview Fire Department. You may recall in the newspaper a couple of weeks ago, Jimmy is going to retire from the Longview Fire Department to go start a second career in the city of Whitoke, where they've, they've actually already appointed him as the fire chief, fire marshal, and building official. So we're proud to see Jimmy head off. We're sad to see him leave, but we're proud to see him head into that new venture just next door, and we look forward to continue the opportunities to work with him as a near neighbor. Heat-related emergencies, I almost took this slide out because this week it kind of didn't make sense, but it's going to get hot again. So I just want to keep this out in front of our citizens to make sure that they know the difference and they know that the quick activation of 911 is paramount. I know a lot of people are going to be going out to the balloon race this weekend. I know those temperatures are going to be creeping back up. So we're not out of the woods yet, so I'm going to keep putting this one out in front of everybody. Our, our heat-related emergency incidents are on the uptick, and we anticipate that to continue, especially through August. We all know how hot it gets around here, really all the way into September. So it just makes sure that you're aware of the differences in the signs and the symptoms. And certainly, last but not least, the code red emergency notification system is available. This was a topic of our conversation today with the emergency managers from around the region. We just want to make sure that we're putting this information out in front of our residents so they know to, that this is a free service that they can take advantage of to be aware of significant events in our city. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief Stillman? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Renata Concin, agenda, any items council like pulled off for separate discussion?
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Renata Budget Items, have a presentation of the proposed fiscal year 2019-2020 budget for the city of Longview. Keith Bonds, and start that clock at three minutes.
You said I had 10.
Okay, you have 10.
I'll talk as fast as possible. Well, thank you, Mayor and council, for allowing me to present now. This is my second budget. I'd like to recognize all the hard work that our managerial and direct staff did. Tremendous job. It makes my job so easy. Especially like to thank the three people that helped the most, Mary Ann Miller, Sean Hara, and Angela Cohen. So without their help, I couldn't have done this. So start with some assumptions that we have. The city's in terrific, strong financial condition, as you're aware. We had a great year of sales tax collections. Our property values continue to show a moderate increase of 3.5% this year. Property tax increase is proposed, it's strictly in accordance to the voter-approved bond election. We are proposing a minimal water and sewer rate increase, no sanitation rate increase. I want to talk a little bit about our health fund and how it has stabilized, and we're proposing to implement a pay plan for the general government employees this year. So this time last year, we projected to end FY '19, or September 30, 2019, with a fund balance of around $11.2 million, which is around 16.11%. So here, almost finishing month 10 of the fiscal year, we are now projecting the fund balance to be $15.571 million, or 22.25%, mainly due to increased sales tax, even though that our projected expenditures are a little bit more than we thought. So what this means is that we're going to add $4,354,063 to the fund balance, which is 8.7, 8.572 million dollars above the minimum of 10%. So good news there. So I'll show this slide later, but right now, I just want to show you that in the first column, this is that $15.571 million. The proposed budget for FY '20 shows a projected fund balance for next September 30, 2020, of 16.99% or 12.463 million. Now, although that shows a deficit between expenditures and revenues of $3.1 million, again, that shows even at that point, we'll be over $5 million above the minimum 10%. So this is a great-looking slide of sales tax. We saw a 9% increase from FY '18 to FY '19, and subsequently, we're going to project a, a little bit more moderate 4% increase in sales tax to almost $24 million. Property tax revenue, same type of bar graph here. It shows, so, property tax collections next year, $32.778 million. This includes the 3.5% increase of values, but also includes 4.9 cents per $100 value that reflects the bond indebtedness from the election. So this graph shows the proportion of the divided sections of our revenues of, from property tax. We've been collecting 50.99 cents for $100 valuation, add 4.9 cents to that, it's 55.89. All of that goes against the debt. You'll see our M&amp;O rate stays at 38.42 cents. So a little bit about the bond election, once again, $104,210,000. We issued a little over $51 million in February. Projects we're working on right now, public safety-wise, the police station, Fire Station 5 is getting really close to going to the bidding phase and then in construction, and working on the police-fire training center as well. Streetwise, the Mobberly High Street Intersection, or what we refer to as the entryway project, Cotton Street Streetscape projects under design, and as well as the Fairmont and Railroad projects are in design and acquisition phase, right away acquisition phase. Parks, we're working on the design for all of these projects, the completion of Lear Park, the Arboretum, the design of the Broton Rec Center renovation and expansion, and we're working on the design of the Cargill Trail Reconstruction, as well as five different neighborhood parks. So this is a slide we show a lot, and being in the third quarter of FY '19, you can see that we're all in the green, which is the design, and it's going to be a while before we see some yellow and red, but the first red or construction phase is Fire Station 5. So general fund revenue, this pie chart indicates the different components of the general fund revenues. So 66% of all revenues for general fund do come from property and sales tax, 46.6 million. So a little bit about the health fund. So I'd like to share this good news, that the significant changes we made last year of adding the health savings account option, increasing the city's and the employees' contributions, and coupling that with the reduction in medical claims, has resulted in our fund balance going from $555,000 to almost $2 million. We are continuing to fund the health savings account incentive of $500 per employee for those who decide to take that option. And last year, the general fund funded that incentive. So this year, the health fund is on its feet, and, and that can fund that incentive itself. So, and I'm really glad to announce there'll be no increases in the premiums, either for the city or the employees. So a little bit about the salary adjustments, so if you've been around a while, like Dr. Mack, you know that in 2009 and 2013, we had an all-employee market-based salary survey. And in 2015, we just adjusted the police pay, and 2018, just the fire department's pay. And in those two years, we did give all other employees 3% increases. This year, we are proposing this market-based adjustments to general government employees, while our police and fire will receive 3% as well as their regular step increases. We used the 16 comparable cities that council approved many years ago. Our goal was to achieve 95% of the market, and this resulted in an average increase of 11% per employee. So if you remember back a few slides ago, I had, showed the deficit between the revenues and expenditures of $3,107,000. Typical for us, and we have this happen to us, that we use that difference for one-time capital expenditures, if you will. So this year, the one-time capital expenditures, vehicle replacement, $1,115,000. A fire engine for $843,000. He should be cheering over there. So we're going to continue with the enterprise resource planning software purchase, $523,000. Three different parks projects, and a traffic signal at Hawkins Parkway and the Institute of Healthy Living Driveway. So a little bit about the parks projects, we're going to build a parking lot for the soon-to-be-completed Guthrie Trail, do some ceiling repairs at Paula Martin Jones, and as the gentleman were here earlier, we're glad to propose a $40,000 match for the skate park. Brian Dodson has come forward with $40,000 that he's personally raised, and we're glad to say that we will match that and allow an $80,000 skate park to be built at Ingram Park. This is a graph that we developed last year to help explain or describe how we've used the reserve funds in the past. Mr. Hara has pushed a button over there, so that's okay. The red, council has this in front of them, is the 10% of the reserve, is the reserve fund of 10% minimum of the expenditures, and the light blue indicates that amount of funding above the 10%. And then the green shows that section of the reserve fund that we were allocated. So I believe council in the past has been and continues to be fiscally responsible, and the use of the reserve fund is only used when it's clearly in excess of the required 10%. So this is, indicates that some years, we use more of the reserve fund than others. General fund expenditures, as expected and as we should, vast majority of our funds are spent ensuring the safety of our citizens. Police and fire services make up 63% of the general fund expenditures, 46.252 million dollars. I'm going as fast as I can, Mayor, so this is, okay. General fund summary. So, general fund summary. So this is the slide I showed previously. So what we're projecting to do is to end next year with a fund balance of $12,463,338, still 16.99% above, 5.12 million above the minimum 10%.
Wait, say that again, Keith. Hold on. Say that one more time.
Six, uh...
The fund balance?
The fund balance, we, $12,463,338, or 16.99.
That's five, almost over 5% above what we have to have.
Five, five, you're right, 7% over, 5.128 million over in dollars. So just want to explain about the water and sewer increases. Utility fund, as you're aware, 100% self-funded. The rates are set to cover all of our expenses. Last rate increase was October 2014. We've delayed increases mainly due to the reduced debt payments and the refinancing of the remaining debt. We continue to cash all of our capital improvements projects, and the utility is scheduled to be debt-free in 2029. However, operating expenses have continued to increase, we must continue to maintain our 1.25 minimum debt coverage ratio. We have recently calculated our customer affordability index. It is to measure the relative appropriateness of our rates. This is an industry measure, which compares the average annual utility billing to the median income of your community. So you can see the different, a strong index is less than 1.2%, middle is 1.2 to 2, weak is greater than 2%. So Longview's index is .88, which is, indicates very affordable rates. So this is the actual rate increase you'll see. I won't go through each one of those figures, but the typical monthly bill only increased 92 cents, or 2.17%. So this is the whole picture. Total budget increasing from $153.8 million to $157,200, even though the general fund increased over, around $3 million, a little over $3 million. Decreases in the enterprise funds and the special revenue funds offset that. However, the debt service funds, debt going up, make more payments, that's the difference in the money. So that's all for that, but we have a, the next council meeting, we'll discuss the budget anymore, do some fleet, fee changes, and discuss the preliminary vote to the tax rate, have a public hearing on the tax rate the next meeting, August 29. We will have a public hearing on the budget, public hearing on the tax rate, adopt the budget, adopt fee changes, have a separate vote to ratify the rate, and LeCoe will be here to present their budget, and then September 12, we'll adopt the tax rate. So that's the picture of the calendar of the next month or so, but I'll be glad to answer any questions, hear any concerns or comments from council.
First off, Mr. Bonds, thank you for a very nice budget summary in preparing a budget for us in your second go-around that is, it, it shows a lot of good news and a lot of good progress we've made in this community, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate every department that, you know, it's always easy in times of plenty to spend money, and, and we've seen times of plenty right now, a little bit, but we've been through times a few the last number of years, and, and I appreciate those same departments being able to tighten their belt and be able to get us through a budget like this without having to increase taxes. And, you know, this tax increase is not an increase because of our budgetary constraints. This is because of the, the bond proposal that the public overwhelmingly voted for. So this is, this is welcome news for our citizens and the fact that we're going to be able to provide more and better services for the same bang for your buck. And I appreciate all the, I know there's, we know how much time goes into this. It's hours and hours and hours and hours from every person involved, and I appreciate that very much. So I want to just say thank you for the presentation. We have a lot to discuss, a lot of things to go over, but I appreciate the, the consistency with which you bring forth to us what we need to see. Thank you, sir. Any questions, Mr. Bonds? Very good. Thank you, sir. We have an action item, consider an ordinance established in the senior advisory committee. Mr. Karen.
Sorry. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Bonds. Last month, we discussed the formation and creation of a senior advisory committee. And so we discussed, we showed you guys what our intended purpose of that committee was, as well as establishing the goals for this committee, which essentially were to be an outreach and a voice of our citizens directly with staff to interact, as well as to be able to identify some issues and ways to be able to better address those moving forward. And so what we are proposing tonight is the creation of this committee. We will open applications for members to, to be on that committee. The committee, the council appointment committee will meet and approve those, most likely in September, to forward to you guys at city council, and then we'll begin quarterly meetings in October of next year. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, Mr. Karen, on this item?
I just have one. As far as the applications, how will you make those available to people that are interested?
They are going to be available online through the city's website, but then if somebody is also interested, certainly they could email me or city staff, and we'll be able to, to get their information from them.
Isn't under the boards and commissions section of our, isn't that under boards and commissions? They can go to the website, boards and commissions. That's how you can send an application to any board or commission that you would like to serve on, because we go through this, you know, this process every year. Nona and Mr. Wright are the liaisons to that committee. And so if you'd like to serve, please serve, and if council has interested parties, please encourage your interested parties to fill an application. Because we, we aren't going to appoint people, we're going to go through the application process. So if you know someone that wants to be on it, have them fill an application, and it'll be reviewed and go from there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Is there, is any questions of Mr. Karen?
Move to approve. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Karen. Renata, items of committee interest. Mr. Moore.
My sesquicentennial moment this evening is about Transportation Day. It's going to be a ride through history. It's presented by Whataburger, and we certainly appreciate their efforts in sponsoring this event. It'll be at the Maude Cobb Activity Center on March 21 of next year, 9:00 a.m., 9:00 p.m. Can get tickets online or at the door, $10 for adults, $5 for military and seniors, and children under 10 are free. And all that money will be donated to the Longview Dreams Center. They will have a website go available on September 4. And in, in Maude Cobb, there'll be a walk-through history, beginning with a horse-drawn buggy, and then all the way to a 2020 vehicle. We're hoping to include all aspects of transportation, rail, air, cars, trucks, balloons, et cetera. And then outside will be displayed a number of classic cars. And in, in addition, coordinating with the show, a trail ride led by Gray County Mounted Sheriff's Patrol, and a cruise through Longview with vehicles ranging from 1900 to 1979. I think that cruise will go from, strangely enough, the Whataburger on Gilmer Road down to Maude Cobb in the morning, and then back up to Whataburger sometime in the afternoon. But it ought to be quite, quite an event, and we're looking forward to it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Snoddy.
Good evening, everyone. Just move to excuse Councilman Ray and Mr. Wright from tonight's meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Also, I was supposed to have a picture. Oh, there they are. As you guys know, we're winding up the summer. It's, it's about over. It's time to go back to school. from the Boys and Girls Club, as well as Thrive 360, treated them to Snow Cone Day, and we had a great time this past Tuesday, I believe. Also, as a reminder, please attend the entryway meeting that will be held, thank you for putting that up there, on Tuesday, July 30, at 6:30 to 8:00 PM, Lutero University in the Allen Room. So hope to see you guys there.
Thank you, Ms. Snoddy. Ms. Shihara?
Mine is just one that we've already talked about, encouraging folks to apply for the senior advisory committee that we just created. So we plan to appoint seven individuals to that committee, so applications are available on the city of Longview site, just like they are, longviewtexas.gov/boards. So please go apply. I would expect that your application needs to be in in the next 30 days, so when we start appointing people, that your application will be there, and would really appreciate all of those that are willing to serve getting that completed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pirtle?
Can't believe everybody missed this. I want to tell Candace goodbye, and that she's the city manager's secretary, and I want to tell her that we've enjoyed her being there, and we've leaned on her quite a bit.
Yes.
And I want everybody to know that we appreciate her.
We're still holding hopes that she's not leaving yet.
Yeah.
Because she said it's still a slight chance she could stay. So we're going to hold out hope, but we are going to take a picture with her tonight before we leave, though. And thank you, Mr. Pirtle. Mr. Bonds?
All in.
Okay, let's see here. We have Downtown Live Summer Sessions, Friday, August 2, Heritage Plaza. So come out and join Downtown Live with Post Profit. That should be a lot of fun, and the weather hopefully be good. The Dog Days of Summer are Saturday, August 17. The N&amp;O kickoff is Tuesday, September 3. And upcoming events, we have, of course, this weekend, the Great Texas Balloon Race. All of you, I'm sure, saw the balloons this morning flying over. It's so wonderful to see those balloons up in the air. It's just, boy, it makes me feel proud of all of you when I look up and I see those balloons, because I know those people are here and people are coming to see that, and they're good for our community. You know, there'll be special shapes around town Friday mornings starting at 7:00 AM. Dustin Hodges and Gene Watson, and the Balloon Glow will be Friday night. Saturday will be Cody Wayne and the Co-Wetzel, and the Balloon Glow, and then Sunday is to fly over East Texas Regional Airport. So get involved with this balloon race, the balloon festival, it's a blast. Come out to the airport, enjoy the sights, the festivities, there's food, there's camaraderie, there's bands, there's, it's everything you could want, and it's just a great time to be, to be in Longview this weekend. If you have more information about these, go to longviewtexas.gov/calendar or visit Okay, survey time. Are you in favor of city government participating with area schools to further educational opportunities for high school students? Okay, hold on. Did y'all get that? See what I just said? Okay, I'm going to take a poll of the council. Yes, in favor, raise your hand.
Are you in favor?
Just curious.
I'm voting yes.
Okay, good, good. In favor?
Yeah, well.
Okay, good, good. Well, 88% said yes. Because I put this before you, and hopefully we'll have a really neat announcement coming up in the next week or so, about something, week or two, about something that we may have planned, where the city of Longview may participate with all the high schools in the community to provide something really special for our students. So I'm glad the citizens agree that 88% say yes, we should, because I think we should too. I think city government and schools should work together any time and every time that they can. I don't think, obviously, we have two separate entities, and we all know that. They have boards, we have boards, they have governance, we have governance, but I think when you can collaborate to work together to better your community, if you don't, you're just being stubborn, obstinate, or other words I have to say for that. So I think that's what we should be doing if we have the chance. Okay, here's my really fun one. If given a chance to go up for free in a hot air balloon, would you take it? I don't show the results yet. Okay, audience, if you'd go up for free, now this is, I'm being for real, don't say it just as you, if you'd go up for free, raise your hand. Y'all are crazy. I'm saying y'all are crazy. Everyone of y'all are crazy. I'm that not-on-your-life thing. You'd have to bound me up, tie me, and duct tape me to go up in a hot air balloon. I am terrified. I think they're gorgeous, I love to see them, but it's a fear of mine to go up and have them, it would scare me to death. But 74% of citizens said yes, they would. So I like that, I'm glad to see it, but not, you couldn't, kicking and screaming, you'd see me going up one of those things.
26%.
I'm with you, I'm that 100% that says not-on-your-life, no way. So, okay, a lot of fun, I appreciate everybody's involvement, we had good survey responses, we had, I appreciate people taking time to read those, because, like I say, I do use those things from time to time to bring things forward and to test the temperature of the community, and it's nice to see where the community stands, so that's always fun. Okay, we are now going to retire executive session to do personnel matters in Test Government Code, Section 551.074, and consider to discuss the performance evaluations for the city attorney, city secretary, and we will not reconvene after this, because I don't want y'all to see Jim Finley crying. Okay, we are adjourned.